...and I will call our regular meeting of the North County Board of Education to order from March 28th, 2019. And we appreciate all of you being here. And we will begin this evening with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone will stand, we'll be led by Commander McKean, Lieutenant Commander Reed, and Lieutenant Commander Ramirez.
Left, right, left, left, right. Hold, right, face, three, stand, arch.
Hallelujah. The Pledge of Allegiance is to be fired in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arch, right, face, forward, arch, left, left, right, left, left, right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the junior ROTC always leading us in that pledge. With that, we would like to ask for Reverend John Cummins to come forward and give our invocation this evening. Again, thank you very much for joining us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Distinguished board members, as Kim said to me, you're getting to be a regular. So I'm glad to be here. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about fruit. Fruit. It's something that a marvelous teacher often taught about and told people that we should be examples bearing fruit. As a matter of fact, even giving an extra year to a tree that was giving up hope and not bearing fruit. And that teacher is a model that most of us, many of us, try to follow after. His name is Jesus. And he often told us how we needed to bear fruit. And we would be known by our fruit. Each one of us has many different gifts. Teachers, pastors, all sorts of jobs. There's doctors, there's lawyers, and everybody, board members. Everyone has a unique gift that they can offer. And that's what's very important about this school district, is that this school district offers many different gifts. Many different gifts of teachers of themselves to their students, and students to each other, and to the community. It's a privilege to be here. I would like to pose one question. And that is from Galatians. Galatians, chapter five. The Apostle Paul gave us a list of things that we should be aware of in ourselves. And see how many of these things we can identify with. They're called fruit of the Spirit. And so I ask you tonight, before we pray, just think about this yourself. He says, "The fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control." How many of those fruits do we bear? Very important for us to understand that and to think about that. And so let us pray. Lord, we come before you tonight, asking your blessing upon this board and the work that they have set out to do. They're not here for any other reason than the young people, the children of Coffee County, that they may do their best towards graduation, that they may learn their best and be taught their best. And each of the teachers and educators would give their best. But bless us tonight. Let your fruit be received by each one of us. And we ask this in the precious name of Jesus. Thank you again for the opportunity.
We have something for you, just a token of our appreciation for supporting our school system and always being here for our students.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir. A pleasure. (applause)
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I bless you.
Thank you.
Every third lizard.
I'll hold you to that.
Thanks. All right. And with that, next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We'll remember to have an opportunity to review that. Need a motion to accept the agenda?
We accept the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Revisions? Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Under leadership capacity, we have the mission and vision of the school system, mission, destination, graduation, for college career in life, and vision, and equitable and excellent education for every student. And we have a presentation tonight from Westside. And they are going to share with us a video that their students made and produced. So we just want to thank Westside for being here and to share their video with us that exemplifies the mission and vision of the school system. So Ms. Jowers, do you have anything to add to that? Any comments you want to make?
Well, yes. We improvised two days ago. It was a good problem to have. We have focused on reading all year long. And our reader leaders have been growing. So when we pulled the report with the last assessment, we had over 135 children that were going to be recognized in person here tonight. So we got the message out to parents. And to make sure that everyone could see it, we decided to go with the video. And you'll see everyone clearly. And thanks to Mr. Chan over here, Dr. Newell. He fixed this up for us. We're proud of it. And I think that our kids will have something to save and put on Facebook and show them. So enjoy.
Thank you.
The Westside Wildcat Reader Leaders are on the field.
Hi, Nancy. My name is Wendy Jowers. And I am the principal at Westside Elementary School. I'm honored to share with you that Westside was recently recognized for beating the odds. So excited to take the field tonight, tell you our game plan for achieving destination.
Graduation!
For college career in life. This year, our focus has been all about growing readers at Westside. As you just see from our scoreboard, the end-of-year Lexiles are posted, and that is our goal, to beat the state. And we want to hit those end-of-year goals. So I'm going to let our players share the end-of-year state Lexile goals for their grade level. First grade, three-year goals.
Three sixty.
Second grade.
Five thirty-five.
Third grade.
Six seventy.
Fourth grade.
Eight forty.
And fifth grade.
Five twenty.
Ladies and gentlemen, take a look at all of these players up here right before you. We've been keeping their stats, and they've been working hard. And they have not only met, but also exceeded those end-of-year goals for the state. So they have the T-shirts to prove it. Show those T-shirts. Look at them, so proud. How about this? Touchdown Wildcat! We are reading these states as Reader Leaders. And at this time, we're going to share one of our special Reader Leaders. Her name is Reese Robinson. And she recently put together a book talk. It is all about reading. So we're going to share her book talk with you.
Reese Robinson here, coming at you with the latest scoop on Dork Diaries, tales from a not-so-smart Miss Know-It-All. This book was written by Rachel Renee Russell. In this book, a girl named Nikki Maxwell writes in the advice column for a school's newspaper. But nobody knows it's Nikki. They just think it's a girl named Miss Know-It-All. Also, she has to deal with Mackenzie, the mean girl. And Mackenzie tries to kick Nikki out of school. My favorite part had to be when Brandon, Nikki's crush, asked her on a date. I'm a Miss Know-It-All, but I know that you'll love this book. Check it out.
Let's give Reese a round of applause. Because we are focused on reading, we've got lots of stuff involved to motivate our players. And I've got some special Reader Leaders to tell you about some of those incentives we have in place. At first, Rainey, tell us about these Reader Leader T-shirts.
Check out our super cool T-shirts. We are indeed for meeting our grade-level Lexile goals.
This past semester, we were able to attend camp reads more because we scored a seven number of reading counts points. We had so much fun working with stations, doing winter experiments. We had a real chance to make them smaller cookies.
The ultimate reward for earning lots of reading counts points and meeting our Lexile goals is a trip to Rockin' Eight Cinemas in Macon. I'm going to make sure I earn my ticket.
I feel the spirit to take the drugs and bars upstairs for great awards coming around. We're busy for just to have you. Wildcat, I'm a little bit wild adventures.
In addition to wanting to motivate our students and inform them about Lexiles, we also include with parents. This case could tell you about a special night we had. It was called NFL Night. What does that stand for, Miss Kay?
Well, we did have a special family night. It was a football theme night. NFL stands for Night of Family Literacy. And on that night, the students got to wear their jerseys. They read into the reading counts test. And they even heard special messages from famous football players who encouraged them to go to the courts and reading. And now, we are going to have our students to share our special Westside cheer there by Mrs. Jowers and Mrs. Hayes.
We are the Wildcats.
We are the Wildcats.
Mighty, mighty Wildcats.
Mighty, mighty Wildcats.
We will succeed.
We will succeed.
We're going to reign.
We're going to reign.
And now we have a very special story about one of our Reader Leaders, Luis Villaln Gomez. He could not be here tonight. Luis is recovering at Eggleston Children's Hospital of America in Atlanta from a heart attack that he had last Wednesday. And this picture that you see was actually taken within 24 hours after he was lifelighted and admitted in the hospital. And as you can see, Luis loves to read. He actually stunned the hospital staff with his reading abilities. They could not believe how much that child could read. And we are super proud of him. Despite his health problems, he has already exceeded our state end-of-year goals with Lexiles. And he's making the absolute best out of his hospital stay in Atlanta by reading books. So we are proud of Luis. He's a very special Reader Leader here at Westside. And we sure do love him. And at this time, Ms. Clayton has a very special story that she would like to share with you.
Thank you, Wendy. I do have a very special story to tell you about with Luis. It was a miracle. On Wednesday, March 20th, this miracle happened on the campus of Westside Elementary School. One of their students, Luis, who you just met, Luis Villaln Gomez, was with his speech teacher, Dr. Dana Tyer, when he fell out of his chair onto the floor. Thinking he may have had a seizure, Dana quickly called the front office, and Mrs. Jowers announced Code Blue. Jody Altman, the school nurse, and Malicia Willis, who serves as a special education paraprofessional and nurse, checked for a pulse and did not find one. Both of the nurses, Jared Vickers, the school resource officer, and the Code Blue team administered one shock with the AED. And the machine notified the team to start CPR. Exactly at the moment when they were told to start CPR, the EMTs from Coffee Regional Medical Center arrived, and they started CPR. When Luis was rolled out of the school on a gurney, he did take a breath. From Coffee Regional, he was lifelighted to Navisant Medical Center in Macon, and immediately transferred to Eggleston Children's Healthcare in Atlanta, where he continues to stay. And I'm happy to tell you that he did have surgery today. He had a defibrillator put in, and they expect him to be home very soon. Thanks to the quick action and response from the Westside Code Blue team, Luis is alive. The doctors in Atlanta told his parents that he was very lucky to be in the right place at the right time. Because without the AED, we would not be telling you this story. We are very thankful that all of our schools are equipped with an AED machine for situations just like this. Over seven years ago, thanks to the monetary donation from Coffee Regional Medical Center, cardiac science AEDs were purchased for all of our schools. And since that time, many of our schools have purchased more. The larger schools have purchased more in case of emergencies, so they're centrally located. We truly appreciate our school nurse supervisor, Mrs. Kathy Cole, for her insight in not only making sure that we have the AEDs available, but providing consistent training for those involved. Kathy, would you please stand? Let's give her a round. Tonight, we want to officially recognize our Code Blue team from Westside Elementary for all that they did to save the life of Luis. This is a story that will never be forgotten in our school system, and most especially on the campus of Westside Elementary. In recognition of the heroism displayed by the Westside Code Blue team, Westside Elementary is receiving this month's superintendent award. The certificate lists all of the team members, and it will be displayed in the front office of Westside for everyone to see. At this time, I would like to introduce all of the team members, starting with Westside's principal, Ms. Wendy Jowers. Wendy is to be commended for her leadership in many areas, but most importantly, creating a Code Blue team that knew how to jump into action. In addition to the superintendent's award, each team member will receive a certificate that was just received today from the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, "Projects Saved," that stands for Sudden Cardiac Arrest, Awareness, Vision for Prevention, and Education. They were absolutely overwhelmed with the attentiveness of this team and what they did to save Luis's life. Next, I would like to introduce Amy Hughes, who is our assistant principal. Jody Altman, who is our school nurse. Kim Caves, our academic coach. Carrie Jo Crosby, our ESOL teacher. Gail Duncan, our front office receptionist. Stacy Hill, our special services referral coordinator. Katie Lott, our PD teacher. Lisa Spivey, our school counselor. Candace Stalby, our ESOL teacher. Dana Tyer, our speech teacher. Malicia Willis, special education paraprofessional and nurse. And I don't believe the resource officer came in, but we certainly commend Jared Vickers, who is the resource officer at Westside Elementary. Please join me in giving these folks a round of applause.
I would just want to echo everything that Ms. Clayton has said. And I know y'all work at your drills. I hear it from time to time. We're doing a Code Blue drill. We're doing the drills. And I know Ms. Cole has been religious about making sure everybody has AEDs in the buildings and making sure we run the drills and that we're prepared. And wow, when you would be ready, you were ready. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause.
You can get a picture, Ms. Clayton.
I can get another. I got one.
Kathy, get off the air.
Thank you.
Our next recognition involves athletics. And we have our wrestling team here. And Coach Randy Garrett is here as the athletic director from Coffee High School to present some awards to our wrestlers.
Thank you, Dr. Lisa. My honor and privilege tonight to introduce to you our wrestling team at Coffee High School. Our wrestlers and coaches are here with us. I want to mention to you that for the second year, we placed in the top 10 in traditional wrestling. And also, for the first time in school history, we placed in the top 10 in the team duels. At this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Kate Park and some of his wrestlers that did exceptionally well. Coach Park, bring everyone up.
Good to see you again, Coach. Good job, guys. Good job. Good job.
Thank you, Coach Garrett. Rare to get to introduce a great group of guys. For the second year in a row, we've been able to do so. We've got six stake placers. Three of them couldn't be here tonight. They're actually wrestling in a tournament right now. So I'll introduce those three first. First of all, placing top six at an individual tournament, you know, with 58 or 59 schools in our classification is huge. We're very proud of our team. Like Coach Garrett said, qualifying for state duels is great. We get to go up there, and that gives our young guys and some of our backups the opportunity to see that atmosphere that normally they don't get to qualify. And then they come back, and they're a little more hungry. And it pushes them to work a little harder. So maybe they can get in the start lineup and get to experience that at a traditional state tournament. But these three guys, along with the three others that are not here, placed in the top six. Some of them for the second time, for the second year. And I'll start with the three that aren't here. We have a sophomore, Jesus Riano. We call him Jesus. He is, like I said, he's a sophomore. He qualified for the state tournament last year as a freshman. Went up there, he didn't win a match. But he, in the 220-pound weight class. And as you know, our heavyweight last year, Derrick Newton was the state champ. So Jesus has some big shoes to fill this year, coming in as a sophomore. He did great. He actually placed fourth. And he lost the third and fourth place match by one point. So we're expecting big things for him. And we've got two more years with him. And he's, like I say, he's a hard worker. He's wrestling right now. The other one is Taion Wimberly. He's a junior. He's a part of that junior group that we've been excited about since their freshman year. They've all stuck together. It's a pretty big group. There's 10 of those guys. And Taion Wimberly is a two-time placer. He got sixth last year. He got fifth this year. And such a tough bracket. Coach Garrett said it last year, and he and I talked about it several times. The state tournament has changed over the past 10 or 15 years. And the competition is incredible. For these guys to place, it really is an honor. Taion was, he's right there in the mix. You know, one or two points, he's in the finals. Or a different side of the bracket, he's in the finals. And we always say that the difference between second and fifth or sixth, it could be two points or it could be three points, depending on how tough that bracket is. The other one is another junior, is Cameron Arvison. He plays football on Friday nights when he's not doing summer workouts or practicing some football with Coach Booth in the weight room. He's getting to sneaking in the wrestling room as much as he can. He wrestles over the summer, during the offseason. He tries to go to as many tournaments as possible. And he placed this year as a junior. He actually placed fifth. And he's very exciting to watch. You never know what's going to happen. He doesn't always run everything perfect. And he's going to do everything you ask him to do. And he's going to be real physical. And it's going to be full speed, no matter what it is. He is exciting to watch. So I'll start with these guys. Nolan Smith is a sophomore. Y'all remember him from last year. He placed as a freshman, the 113-pound weight class. And most wrestlers that come in as a freshman, and they're in a lighter weight class. And then the next season, they grow and they jump a few weight classes. If they don't cut weight and get back around the same weight class that they were the year before, it's very uncommon for them to be as successful that next year at a heavier weight class. Nolan came in at 126, and that was the weight class he wrestled. And he placed fifth this year, placed sixth last year as a sophomore. So we're looking for great things from him, too. So we've got two more years with him. And Nolan actually lost to the Pope Kid, four to two, to get to the state championship match. That was the match that was in the semifinals. So that tells you how tough his weight class was also. So he should be in the finals next year. And our two seniors here, Philip Faribault came to us. He was 113. And wrestling, you were pretty confident with Faribault that there wasn't a tournament we were going to go to that he wouldn't place top three or four, hopefully be in the finals. And state duels that we qualified for was a little rough on Philip. He came back. He made a few changes, put in a little extra work, a little extra effort. And at the state tournament, he comes in and gets sixth as a senior. And he lost to the state runner-up last year from Richmond Hill in his fifth and sixth place match, four to one. And that was one of the best matches he wrestled. So that was a good one to end on. Our final placer right here, Case Merritt. Case is a program kid. He's been wrestling since sixth grade, probably before that with Chloe, I'm sure, his sister. And Case is one of the, he's the true definition of a hard worker. He's going to do everything you ask him to do. He's going to do everything you ask him to do. He understands wrestling, he's very technical, he's, he's very physical. But all, all three of these guys are more physical than they look, I promise. But Case, Case, Case was a JV region champ his freshman year at Camden. And he goes from a JV region champ to a two-time region champ, and two-time sectional champ, and then he was a two-time state placer. He placed last year, he got fifth, and then he comes back and gets state runner-up this year as a senior. And I'm telling you, getting in the state finals in 6A, any, any classification is a huge accomplishment. But in that classification that we ran, Case's bracket was one of the toughest brackets in the state. And he just, he showed true resilience all the way through that bracket, and, and he really gave, gave the state champ a run from Brunswick. It was an awesome match to watch. He was right there in that match. Two of our seniors, two of the three, are signed wrestling scholarships. Faribault will be wrestling at Brooks Park for next season, and Case will be wrestling at Life University.
Coach, thank you for the job you're doing with the wrestling program. It's amazing how far the program's come over the last few years with your leadership. So we, we certainly appreciate what you're doing with our young men at Coffey High School with the wrestling program. That's just a great job, and it's just good to see our kids competing at the highest levels in the state of Georgia. So thank you. At this time, I want to recognize our board members. It is Board Member Appreciation Week, the Georgia School Board Association Appreciation Week. And so we have goodie bags for each one of our board members, our schools attributed to the bags. So board members, you have a big bag here full of goodies, and we appreciate what you all do for our boys and girls here in Coffey County. And so at this time, I want to present District One, Mrs. Tanya Wilkerson, your certificate for Board Member Appreciation. Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. We appreciate what you do. And District Two, Mr. Jesse Dowers, thank you for what you do, Mr. Dowers. And District Three, we have Ms. Reagan Miller. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for what you do. Appreciate you. And we have District Four, Mr. Brian Preston, thank you for what you do, Mr. Preston. We appreciate you. And we have District Five, Mr. Adam Lott. Thank you, Mr. Lott, for what you do for the Board of Education. Thank you. Oftentimes, people don't understand the time and commitment that board members have to put in, and the attention to detail, and getting called in the supermarket and somebody wants to share with you their issues, calling in at different times. So we appreciate your commitment to serve, and public service is certainly important in elected positions that you hold, certainly important. So thank you.
Now that Walmart has that pickup, we don't have to worry about it.
All right.
And I must say, Ms. Dowers, if Coach Jimmy Roberts ever gets horns at a football game, we know who's calling.
And we scrambled. Thank y'all for your, your resilience yesterday when we realized there was going to be 135. You look in this room, I don't, I don't think there's probably, what, about six chairs in here, so.
We worked it out.
Mamas and daddies and everybody's here anyways, that would have been.
It was a good problem.
Yeah.
They are reading.
Thank you. Coastal Plains Education, we have that on the agenda for action, asking the board to approve Coastal Plains Education as a charter high school. Coastal Plains Education was presented at the work session immediately prior to this meeting. Board consensus was to accept the superintendent's recommendation, recommendation, and include the approval on the regular agenda. So board members, I would recommend that we approve Coastal Plains Education for Coffey County. Where would it start? This would start in July. They actually start in the summer. It goes year-round.
Need a motion? I move we accept the agreement with Coastal Plains Education for the night school?
Yes, sir.
Is that coming up?
Yes, sir.
At the, and that will be held at the Progress Career Academy.
Career Academy, yes, sir.
One second, is there any further discussion?
Could you, could you just kind of detail that real quick?
Yes, sir. What this will consist of, Coastal Plains Charter High School is a high school operation, and they operate currently in Camden County, Lounds County, Wayne County, Long County, Candler County, Bydette, Liberty County, and they operate a satellite in Jeff Davis County. And they will establish a night school program at our Career Academy in the evenings from four to nine, Monday through Thursday. And this will be open to any students between the age of 14 and 21 who qualify. They do have some criteria that the students have to meet to qualify for the night school program. But this will be taught by certified teachers who are employed through Coastal Plains, and it will probably be a lot of our current teachers who choose to do this in the evening, if they are hired by Coastal Plains, and they can do this in the, in the evening. And, but it is an opportunity for students to earn a high school diploma at night in Coffey County. And this will be at our Career Academy location. It will be tuition-free. There is no cost to the student. There is also a component where a community member, if they're 21 years or older, and they want to go back to high school, they can pay to go there and earn a high school diploma at night at Coastal Plains Academy. And so this is an opportunity to offer those students who choose to go to evening school, to go to evening high school here in Coffey County.
Thank you for that summary, Dr. Lisa. Motion is on the table, it's been seconded. That discussion, need a vote, are in favor? This motion.
All right. Thank you. Consent agenda, on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the last month's meeting. We have the financial report. We ended the month of February with $17,422,171.42. Adoption of bond resolution. The board agreed in the work session to adopt the bond resolution that will allow the, the school system to bond $8 million. And this bond will be paid back using Eastfloss Five Funds. The work that will begin initially, I would include that, too, is renovations at Coffey High School. We will begin renovations at Coffey High School, including new lighting, new HVAC, new ceiling, and painting the entire interior of the school building. And these bonds will be used to pay for that work. And that school, believe it or not, the new high school's 25 years old, so it's time to do that kind of work there. Out-of-state travel, we have one group from Eastside that is going to the Jacksonville Zoo. So that will be out-of-state travel. Surplus property, we have some property out at Nichols Elementary School. It's an old shelter that they want to declare surplus, and somebody can purchase to take off the property. And we also have some old furniture and some old cafeteria equipment, as well as some other surplus items out at the warehouse in Ambrose, beside the where, the Ambrose School that we're declaring surplus property. And that will be sold on govdeals.com. Govdeals.com, you'll find those items for sale to the public. Wiregrass Career Academy, school improvement funding. The Georgia Department of Education has targeted the Career Academy for improvement. And with this targeting for improvement, they will receive $75,000 from the Georgia Department of Education. The focus will be improving graduation rate at the Career Academy. May 2019 meeting date, we are making sure that the date is clearly notated for the public, May 7, 2019. That is the first Tuesday of the month we will have our board meeting in May. There was a little problem with the original posting that the date was stated wrong, so we're making sure that that's clear for everybody to know that our May, May meeting will be May 7, the first Tuesday of the month in May. GSBA exemplary board application, the board is approving submission of exemplary board status to the Georgia School Board Association. And I do want to announce that the recognition for the Georgia School Board Association exemplary board will be at the annual school board conference in Savannah. And the opening morning, that Friday morning of the school board association conference, our own Coffey High School chorus will be opening up the session in front of about 700 people that morning, and they will be singing a trio of songs there that morning. So that'll be a beautiful opportunity for our young people to shine in front of all the other school boards in the state of Georgia. Soft docs enhancement, we're asking the board to approve purchase of soft docs. This is a software package that we use in our human resource department, and we use it in our financial department. Our, our technology department is, would have to install new servers if we did not make this purchase and move this package to the world wide web. So by making this purchase, we'll move the software package to online via the internet, and therefore, we won't have to purchase new servers. And this will also give us some new functions within this software package that we currently don't have. It'll help us automate some things and not have to shuffle as much paper within the school system. The next item is the policy JCDAA is due to tobacco use. We're adding vaping devices to that to make sure that it's very clear that not only do we not allow tobacco use on our campuses involving our students, but we also do not allow vaping devices on our campuses in, in possession by our students. We're also amending policy GAN, employee tobacco use, to add vaping devices, to make sure that no employees are in possession or using vaping devices on our campuses or on our property. And then approval of policy IHD honor rolls. This will allow those students who are beyond the ninth grade, that if they did not necessarily take the classes to be in the honor track, their ninth grade year, this would give the opportunity for that student in 10th or 11th grade, if they wanted to get into the honors program and be eligible as an honor graduate, then they would have that opportunity with this amendment to this policy. Approval of policy revision, date DJEAC, purchase of credit card. Our auditor cited on our, our audit that our policy needed to contain a statement that mentioned purchasing cards or debit cards rather than just credit cards. Our old policy just said, credit cards, we need to add debit cards. All right. And then the consent agenda would be complete with policy DJEAC.
Okay. They're not jumping in there in the 10th grade. They still got to make up those classes. They still got to take the same amount of classes, honors classes, as everybody else.
That's right.
They can just get back on track by making those up. It's not.
We changed it in our previous policy. We said that those classes had to be taken in sequence, all right? And now we're changing the terminology to say that the progression, as long as they take those classes, they can take it in 10th grade or 11th grade and, and be in the running to be an honor graduate. So we're not opening the door and just saying, all right, come one, come all. It just means that if a student, for whatever reason, in ninth grade, did not take one of those required honors classes to be an honor, they could take one of those classes in 10th, 11th, and 12th. But I will tell you, it will be very difficult and very, very challenging for the student that can do that, but there may be students that can do it, and this opens the door for them to be able to do that, is the idea. Did that answer? Let's get a vod. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
Need a motion? Accept the consent?
Motion.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right. I would ask the board for an executive session to discuss personnel, and also to discuss, deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hire, dislocation, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, and to consider a matter involving the disclosure of personally identifiable information from a student's educational record, and discuss, discuss records that are otherwise protected from disclosure under the Open Records Act.
Need a motion?
Would we exit to executive session?
Be ready for your motions and your certificates and your.
Not a motion. Exit.
We got to be, thank you. Please second to that.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. We've got the personnel recommendations, the regular monthly personnel list. I'm going to ask the board to approve that list, but I'm going to ask you to pull number 28, and we will vote number 28 separately. So I'm asking for the vote on the personnel list without number 28.
And there was one scratch.
Well, yes, and, and.
Minus number 30.
Minus number 30.
Make a motion, we approve personnel recommendation, minus 28 and 30.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. And I would ask the board to approve number 28.
I move we accept the recommendation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. And I ask the board to accept the resignations and retirement list that was approved, or that was presented, the annual retirement resignation list.
Without changes, no revisions.
Without changes. You got a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Then I would ask the board to approve the 2018, 2020 certified recommendations, and we will pull number 243.
And 366.
And 366. So pull, so we will approve it without 243 and 366.
Make a motion, we approve the list presented.
Is there a second?
Well, I see for that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. We will vote, I'll ask the board to approve number 243.
Make a motion, we approve 243.
Any discussion?
I will abstain.
And then I would ask the board to approve number 366.
Make a motion, we approve 366.
I will abstain.
All in favor?
All right.
I will abstain.
Thank you.
All right.
That is it?
All right. With that, we conclude our agenda. We can officially adjourn our regular meeting tonight of our Coffey County Board of Education. So with that, board then have comments?
Just, again, really, really proud of our folks at Westside that helped Louise survive. Good news. We need more of it. And I very appreciative of our goodie bags.
Absolutely.
Hoping that the pollen all over my car, there's a goo goo card in there.
I think we all agree on that sentiment. Absolutely.
We welcome our new assistant superintendent, she's here.
Yes, sir.
And with this targeting for improvement, they will receive $75,000 from the Georgia Department of Education. The focus will be improving graduation rate at the Career Academy. May 2019 meeting date, we are making sure that the date is clearly notated for the public. May 7, 2019, that is the first Tuesday of the month we will have our board meeting in May. There was a little problem with the original posting that the date was stated wrong. So we're making sure that that's clear for everybody to know that our May meeting will be May 7, the first Tuesday of the month in May. GSBA exemplary board application, the board is approving submission of exemplary board status to the Georgia School Board Association. And I do want to announce that the recognition for the Georgia School Board Association Exemplary Board will be at the annual school board conference in Savannah. And the opening morning, that Friday morning of the School Board Association conference, our own Coffey High School chorus will be opening up the session in front of about